So, welcome and thank you for joining us today, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm Helen Hutchison, a volunteer and member of the League of Women Voters of Oakland. We're pleased to have as partners today AAUW Oakland Piedmont Branch, Alameda County Bar Association, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Asian Immigrant Women's Advocates, Center for Elder's Independence, Centro Legal de la Raza, East Bay Housing Organizations, EBHO, National Coalition of a Hundred Black Women, Oakland Chinatown Coalition, Oakland Chinatown Improvement Council, Oakland Violence Prevention Coalition, Piedmont Pines Neighborhood Association, and SPUR. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. This forum is presented by the education arm of the league, which does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, nor take positions on issues or ballot measures. Today's candidate forums are being televised by KTOP, Oakland's cable access station, and livestreamed on the city's website, The forums are also being recorded and can be viewed later on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website or YouTube channel. The recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Oakland. Filming or recording these sessions by anyone other than KTOP is not permitted. This election season, we're hosting in-person candidate forums for thirteen Oakland races over two Saturdays. The first was on September twenty-first, and today is the final forum. We're glad you could join us. This session is for the position of Oakland City Council at large. There are ten candidates listed on the November fifth ballot for this position. They are Laron Armstrong, Rowena Brown, Sean Donino, Katitha Maturi, Mindy Petchenook, Fabian Robinson, Nancy Sidebotham, Salika Thomas, Christina Tostada, and Charlene Wong. The candidates participating today met the criteria for participation according to our protocols and ground rules, which you can find on the table outside for reference. Candidate Laron Armstrong could not attend today. Also not attending is Salika Thomas. But I do have a statement from Laron Armstrong that I'm going to read. "Good morning and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum today. I truly appreciate the invitation, and while I couldn't attend in person today due to my role as grand marshal in the fiftieth annual Black Cowboy Parade in West Oakland, I couldn't miss the chance to share my message and story with you. I'm a West Oakland native, raised in public housing by a single mother who worked two jobs to keep our family going. Watching her, I learned the strength and determination it takes to provide for a family. I also learned early on about the deep pain of loss when my brother was shot and killed here in Oakland while I was in high school. That loss changed me. It set me on a path to seek justice, not just for my family, but for every family impacted by violence. And while accountability and justice are crucial, I also believe in the power of prevention, mentoring, education, and job programs that give our young people the opportunity to choose a different path. For twenty-four years, I proudly served the people of Oakland, including two years as chief of police. I know what our community is up against when it comes to public safety and housing. I've seen firsthand how our neighborhoods and businesses can't thrive without safety. I'm the only candidate in this race who has put proven effective crime reduction policies into action, policies that have made a real difference. But safety alone isn't enough. As someone born and raised here, I know how heartbreaking it is to watch longtime Oaklanders be pushed out of their homes due to rising costs. I believe that the people who work here and who've built their lives here deserve to stay here. That's why I'm committed to policies that create affordable housing and prevent homelessness. I will fight to bring in the resources from county, state, and federal levels to ensure that our unhoused neighbors get the support they need. Finally, I want to say this: I love Oakland. I've seen its challenges up close, but I've also seen its strength, its resilience, and its potential. I can't stand by and watch the people and businesses in our community continue to struggle when I know I have the experience to make the difference. I've led Oakland's largest department with over eleven hundred employees and a budget of three hundred million dollars. I know what it takes to make a government work efficiently for everyone, and I'm ready to bring that leadership to City Hall. The city is my home, our home, and I'm ready to fight for it. I hope you are too, and vote. Laron Armstrong is your first ranked by November fifth. Thank you." So now on to a few logistics. The process is, the speaking order has been randomly assigned, and each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. If there is a lightning round, which I don't think there will be, those questions will be a yes or no answer. The timekeepers will signal candidates when there are thirty seconds remaining and when to stop. I think we also have a fifteen-second flag. As moderator, I may verbally give these prompts as well, and I ask you to please, you don't need to cut yourself off immediately, but please finish your statement quickly. There are no separate rebuttals, but candidates may choose to use some or all of their one and a half minutes to rebut a response given by another candidate. The first three questions today will be for all ten, the first question today will be for all ten candidates. After that, each question will be posed to three candidates. Candidates each have one wild card that they can use to answer a question that wasn't originally posed to them. In addition, they may use some or all of their time for another question to speak to that original question. So, we may, there's a variety of ways to answer the questions. Following the questions, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement, and then we'll do the reverse order from the original question. Questions for this forum have been prepared in advance by the League of Women Voters and our partners, and we have a few from the audience here. We will take more questions from the audience. If you want to ask a question, raise your hand, and one of our volunteers will give you an index card to write that question on. Please keep your questions succinct and directed to all candidates, not individual candidates. We'll try and include as many of those questions as time allows. So before we begin, the candidates, in order to be heard on KTOP broadcast, you need to turn your mic on by pushing the on button in front of you and speaking directly into the microphone. When you're done speaking, please be sure to return your mic to the off position. So, our first question, and this is again for all the candidates, all eight candidates here. The question is, what experience and background qualifies you for the position of City Council Member at Large? Sean Donino.
Just confirming, folks can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Hey, everyone, I'm Sean Donino. I use he and they pronouns, and I'm running for Oakland City Council at Large on a deeply pro-housing, pro-mobility platform, centering climate change and affordability above all. I come with the endorsement of the Sierra Club, the Pro-Housing Democratic Caucus, East Bay for Everyone, Free Fifty Bay Area Action, Sunrise East Bay, as well as East Bay Yimby. And I know firsthand that crossing the street should not be the most dangerous thing we do, but it absolutely is across the city of Oakland. I have a mother that uses a wheelchair, and I serve on the board of Transport Oakland and Transform, deeply focused on affordability and making sure that our neighborhoods are walkable. On day one, I'll be passing a policy to legalize backyard homes and the separate sale of them across our community, as well as neighborhood markets, so that we can introduce walkability back to our communities. I know that homelessness is a policy choice, and I personally have lived experiences around homelessness. I worked at the State Housing Department for five years, where I planned for the construction of over a quarter million homes across the state. I had the privilege of reviewing Oakland's housing plan, where I got the Rock Ridge neighborhood, a neighborhood not known for its affordability, where the columns are still up that used to mark the homeowners associations that didn't let Jewish families like mine buy in. I got it desegregated and allowed to accommodate five thousand additional homes. Running on a deeply pro-housing, pro-mobility candidate as a platform and centering these climate change and affordability issues, we have a deeply serious policy platform. We've knocked on sixty-five thousand doors at this point, and I'm really excited to tell you more about my background. So, thanks so much for having me.
Yes, my name is Nancy Sidebotham. Many of you may know me. I've run before for various offices, and I continue to run because people need to be educated and know the truth about what's going on in Oakland. We have serious problems in Oakland, and I'm running because I care and love the city. I've been here since nineteen sixty-four. I went to Merrick College on Old Grove Street. I went to Cal State Hayward, and I've been here fighting for Oakland for as long as I've been here. I got involved in politics in the eighties, and since then, I have worked in various areas of Oakland, park and rec, police services. When I say work, it's been on a volunteer basis, and I'm head of my Crime Prevention Council, and I'm on the CPAB Board and a bunch of other areas of the city that I continue to work on. We seriously need to come together as a team. We cannot rely on the council members and the mayor alone. The city needs to stand up and take a stand on how the city is run. We have neglected this for too long. We elect people, and then we look away. People get in office, they're there for three and a half years on their hidden agendas, and the rest of us suffer until they're ready to run again, and we keep electing the same ones over and over again. This needs to change. We need to fight for our city, and we need to do it this year, not next, because Oakland is dying on the vine right now, and nothing's changing. Thank you.
Kanitha?
On that note, my name is Kanita Maturi. I'm originally from Cambodia, a political asylum refugee. Both of my parents serve billing human right and reproductive right in my country. And for that, they were imprisoned, and they were laid on release, and they settled to stay back and continue their work while they have us come here under protection, asylum and protection. My mom was kidnapped and was missing when I was seventeen years old. I joined the Air Force background because I didn't have any money to go to school. So I did that for nine years on the Air Force Reserve, got married, had two children, and what brought me to Oakland, because I love Oakland, I came here, it's about seventeen years now that I serve the public and balancing budget through my restaurant called Spice Monkey, right here in Seventeen and Webster, and also Howden Market. So as the only small business that's on here that really understands budget and how to navigate through tough time, as Oakland is not healthy, needs a lot of help, more than ever, I am stepping up to make sure that this mission and representing the small business voice, so my platform will be public safety, public safety, and save all our small business and business in general, and rebuild housing, because it's not affordable to live here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fabian?
Hey, my name is Fabian Robinson, born and raised in Oakland, California. I love my city, and this is a city that is a stepbrother to San Francisco and to San Jose. Why? Because of politicians. One thing about it, politicians have let our cities down. We see the highest murder rate out of San Jose. Look at just the areas, San Leandro, Berkeley, Emeryville. Why ain't no murders over there? But when you come to Oakland, this is where all the violence is. Why? Because you have politicians that have failed Oakland, and I'm tired of that. And I think everybody should be just like me, be pissed off what these politicians have did to our city. And all you do is see them smile, and you never see them at your grocery stores? Why vote for them? You never see them at walking down the street? Why vote for them? You can catch me all the time walking down my neighborhood, know everybody down my neighborhood. I'm Pastor Fabian Robinson, my church is in West Oakland. We gave out over fifteen hundred free guard cards, so people can work security in Oakland. Well, I'm a fighter for Oakland, and I'm gonna continue to fight for Oakland, and I ain't gonna take up all your time telling you all about me, but you will see my policies and know that I'm qualified to do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy?
Yes, I'm Mindy Petchenook, and I'm probably the only person on the panel who's not from Oakland originally. I'm from New York City, and I'm seventy-two years old and have experienced and worked for the last fifty years across the country. And now Oakland is my home, and what I've seen in the seven years that I've lived in this city is the destruction of the city. And as an outsider, this is, I think, one of my greatest qualifications. We have to break from the controlled environment over Oakland. It's only gotten worse, not better. There's something wrong with that equation. I'm an American system economist, and what that means is, I go back to the ideas of George Washington and Alexander Hamilton, Benjamin Franklin, Abraham Lincoln, JFK. Let's rebuild. Oakland needs industrial development, manufacturing. It needs to give its citizens a way to raise a family where one person can go to work and the other can stay with the children. I'm an educator, I'm a classically trained bassoonist, and I know a lot about what has to go on in education, which is another part of what I will do. And I will also go after the drug cartels. This is a crime which has gone too long in the city and work with the police, whose hands are totally tied at this moment by the ordinances of the city, and I will fight to take that down. Oakland again could become safe and productive. Thank you, and thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum.
Thank you. And Christina?
Hello, everyone, my name is Christina Tostado. I also go by Tina from the town. I grew up on Sixty-second and East Fourteenth. Actually, to kind of clarify, there's very few people that are actually from Oakland, and I think that's one of the issues that we're having. We're seeing our mayor is not from here, our chief of police, the Department of Transportation, our admin. We need to provide jobs for people here in Oakland. Business development is part of my plan. Also, mental health is a big priority here. I don't know one single person that wasn't affected during this pandemic, and I plan to restore, a lot of buildings invest in Oakland. For me, I'm a library commissioner here. I'm a part of Reading Partners, I'm a mentor to end census gun violence. I was a former board member of the Oakland Latino Chamber. I'm also on the board for the Oakland Ed Fund. I'm a part of the advisory board. Everything I do in Oakland is volunteer. I love our city, too. I'm here to fight for it as well, and we deserve. We don't have the basic necessities. We don't have clean water, we don't have even paved streets. It's not as safe as it used to be, right? We need to definitely invest. I'm the one candidate that's collaborated and has great relationships with government, with business owners, and also community stakeholders. I'm a supervisor at Costco Wholesale, who has a great relationship, who has a great rapport to obeying the law.
Thank you. Rowena?
Good morning, everyone, Rowena Brown. Proud to be running for Oakland City Council. East Bay native, grew up playing in East Oakland parks to living, working, and playing in Oakland for about two decades now. I would say that I am the, you know, my experience working here in the city of Oakland, I've been rooted here for about two decades, and so, and I have experience working not only for local government, for the city of Oakland, working during the worst times of the pandemic, providing key resources to community in East Oakland. And now, in my current role, I serve as District Director to State Assembly Member Mia Bonta, focused on, you know, providing services to community in Oakland. I've had the, I would say that I'm the only candidate here that, on this, you know, running for this office that has experience working across governmental agencies, not only here in the city of Oakland, but at the county level, and also with state agencies. I've had the opportunity to work on environmental policy, help support initiatives to reduce human trafficking here in our city with some key bills just being signed by the governor just last week. And then I think maybe the last thing that I would add is, you know, as a candidate for Oakland City Council, you know, I'm focused on ensuring that we can actually have in Oakland, where you can see, you can see the change, right? We see the improvement around public safety. Our streets are clean, not just in a certain segment of our city, but throughout the city. So I'm very well aware of the issues that are impacting our community, and I think I'm the best candidate to roll up my sleeves and get the job done starting day one.
Thank you. Charlene?
Hi, everyone, my name is Charlene. I'm also an East Bay native. My grandparents lived in low-income housing, right off the highway in West Oakland. I am deeply disturbed by why I see as the start of abandonment here in Oakland. I've been a longtime social reformist, worked on just historic groundbreaking programs across the country, actually. I was appointed to the Biden-Harris administration, where I stood up a four billion dollar infrastructure program to restore communities that were destroyed by the highway system. Oakland is actually getting thirty-two million dollars out of that program. I currently work at the Environmental Protection Agency, standing up Historic Office of Environmental Justice. I actually reformed the homelessness response system out in Massachusetts. I have some very specific thoughts in terms of what needs to be done here in the city of Oakland in terms of to fix our broken homelessness response system. I stood up universal free preschool and head start programs for low-income families out in New York City. What I am arguing to you all is that this city government is deeply dysfunctional. We all see it. I would like to bring in some of the best practices that I've seen and been able to see from cities, federal government, just and bring those lessons learned here. I've done everything from work from government accountability offices. We know there's a lot of waste and just wasteful spending here in Oakland. I am determined to bring those lessons learned and really ensure that we whip our government into better shape here. And finally, I am endorsed by the Sierra Club, Firefighters Union, Planned Parenthood, and Team Streour Seventy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're now going to move to our questions that are going to go to three candidates each time. There's gonna, and I'll explain, sometimes it's going to be just two. So this first question will go to Nancy, Kanitha, and Fabian. And Nancy first. So what are the citywide concerns the Council Member at Large should prioritize?
The first thing the Council at Large needs to do is get involved with the whole city, which is something that the at-large councilperson has not ever done. And that needs to change, because you're representing the whole city, you're being elected by the whole city, and you should be there for the whole city. The first, the other thing you should do is go to the different meetings that happen in different districts. Set up a website where people can ask questions and email you to let you know what their concerns are, so that you can work with them and guide them to get their issues, you know, taken care of, or at least looked into. Being part of the city is part of being part of the whole, and that has not been happening in Oakland at all. We've been left out of the loop, as I said before. Three and a half years of personal self-interest is what's been running this council, and it's not been for the city at all. Thank you.
Kanitha?
To add upon that, that large seat is a very important seat. From my looking up, who never ran for office before, getting engaged with the community is definitely is something, because you are the House of Representatives, which represent the people's voice, and I don't think that is, it's been done correctly. As a small business and dealing with the day-to-day on the front end, having my business right in the uptown for seventeen years, I think that the council could definitely be engaged more with the public. I am going to prioritize public safety, because the small business, which also feed into the general fund, is dying. We are literally losing all our life-saving, trying to navigate all the bureaucracy. You know, more fees and taxes are adding upon. It's very difficult to operate business in the city of Oakland. The city of Oakland is not a pro-business city, so those are my priorities. Safety, to provide a place where people can actually work, live, and visit safely, which we don't feel that on the ground, and that's the reason why I'm stepping up to help with this situation.
Thank you. And Fabian?
My first is public safety. Could you hear me? Public safety. One thing about it, Oakland is a dangerous city. And my second priority would be is for the budget. And a lot of people don't talk about it because they're too scared to talk about it. But the police overtime, you got some people working nineteen hours a day for six days a week. It's impossible. It's impossible. And our budget is so high, and nobody will talk about the police overtime, because everybody gets scared, because I won't get in office if I say anything about the police. What's right is right. That's the biggest part of our budget, is the police, is the police. So what we gotta do, we gotta make sure that somebody wash the overtime, because, trust me, I was a construction worker. You are not working nineteen hours a day with no sleep. And what is that, a thirty, a thirty, a thirty, a thirty-minute break? A thirty-minute break, and then after the break, then what is it? A fifteen, fifteen-minute break and thirty-minute lunch? And you're gonna do this for nineteen hours? That's ridiculous, and it's the truth.
Okay, so Rowena Brown is using her wild card on this question.
Excellent. This is an excellent question, because this is the work that I get to do every day in my role as District Director. And so I'll be, as the at-large council member, it's really key that you have key partnerships and connections throughout the city in order to impact change. And so, as an elected council member, I'll really be focused in on the homelessness crisis that is impacting our city across the city. I think a lot of times, our council members are busy putting out fires in their own district, and we really need a council member who's going to be focused on creating solutions and partnering with key agencies to address this issue, like, and getting support from our county and state representatives. And this is all work that I get the opportunity to do every day. I also think the City Council Member at Large should also be focused in on the illegal dumping issue that is plaguing various communities throughout the city. So that would also be something that I'd be really interested in really taking lead on. And similarly, there's a, it would be really important to, in an effort to help reduce the public safety issues that is impacting the city, like, citywide, I'd be focused on our community-based organization and the neighborhood crime prevention councils, and ensuring that they have the resources and tools to really help address this issue, kind of from, from community up.
Thank you. And Charlene, did I see you?
Yes, yes, I did. Okay. So, I think the role of the City Council at Large is really to present a vision that can unify the entire city. What I'm running on is, okay, public safety is absolutely number one. We cannot get anywhere without first prioritizing that. However, the other challenge that we have here in the city is the fact that, in order, for example, to fund the hiring of more officers, we do need to have inclusive economic development. We need to generate more tax revenue, especially given the budget deficit that we have. So what I'm running on is actually two things, to, in order to generate more tax revenue here in Oakland, that also will generate a more inclusive economic development, better job opportunities. There are a lot of folks that are living paycheck to paycheck here in Oakland, and it's really tough to make it by. I'm running to actually bring manufacturing jobs and renewable energy and clean transportation, building off the successes of what's already been done in the Biden-Harris administration. These jobs are proliferating throughout the country, and actually in the, in the Bay Area, too. But we are not reaping the benefits here in Oakland. And finally, I'm also running on the creation of cultural districts that can have the right tax policies to make it easier to stand up businesses for amazing ethnic communities here in Oakland that will also generate the tourism dollars that are needed, again, to fund so many of the social services that are needed. If we want to solve homelessness, if we want to increase the size of our police force and invest into community policing, more money is absolutely needed to be brought into the city of Oakland. And also, given my role at the Biden administration to generate, and I will stop. Thank you.
Okay. The next question is going to go to Mindy and Christina. And it is, what are the initiatives with citywide impact that you would like to lead on as a council member at large? So, Mindy?
Well, to start off with, you can't separate any, the homelessness, the drugs, the crime into separate compartments. We gotta get an overall commitment to the city that actually will say, wait a minute, we're gonna have a plan. We're gonna now not put any more stop-gap measures. See, all that's happening now is, okay, we got this problem, let's throw a little money here, a little money there. That's not gonna do it. It's like having an automobile, and it's lost all its wheels, it's lost its steering wheel, and the engine block is gone. What do you need to do? You need to get a new car. So what we need to do is to take the budget, take out all the funding of NGOs. A lot of these projects, like the sustainable projects, and we need to get it into an industrial base, start creating a revenue base, which is actually productive. And that means working, of course, with the population together, means working across all the agencies. But you have to sit down and say, how are we gonna rebuild Oakland as a whole? How are we gonna actually look and, you know, realize that, you know, it's not rocket scientists, that we need to hire more garbage collectors? And for as far as the police go, and I've done four ride-alongs with the Oakland Police in the last month or so. And I can tell you, their hands are so tied, but what they want to do, they cannot do. And that's one of the first things I would do, is get rid of these oversight committees and get, change the ordinances, so that our police, who know how to do their job, can actually also increase the amount of people that we can hire for the police, which is a big problem right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina?
Hi, guys, I'm Christina Tostado once again. I made Miss Helen hungry earlier, she said Tostada, but... I want to prioritize on mental health. Like I said before, I don't know one single person that wasn't affected during this pandemic. We gotta focus on each and every single Oaklander. We gotta make sure that you're okay. Let's make sure we provide resources to be able to get you, to get the resources that you need, the help that you need. We need to have therapists that look like us, that we can get to a point where we're mentally okay. And then, we do need to provide jobs, right? We do need to make a living. I have a marketing background. I have a bachelor's in communications and advertising through Cal State East Bay. I look at different things that we can be providing here. We can have money coming in. We lost a lot of teams. We've gotten different places where we can, sorry. We have different resources that we can tap into. When I talked about mental health earlier, two hundred and six million dollars go to Alameda County. We need to make sure that they allocate it here in Oakland, and I plan to do so.
Thank you. Okay. This next question is going to go to Rowena, Charlene, and then Sean. And it's one, we have one from our audience here. "Our Office of Ethics and the Ethics Commission don't seem to be adequately funded. What is their budget, and what should it be?"
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. Thank you. I'm first, right? I'm first, right? Okay, thank you, thank you for this question. As far as I know in the research that I've done, I would, I would say that the ethics kind of department within the city of Oakland, I believe they're all volunteers that are doing, doing the work, but I could, I could be wrong. I just, ultimately, I know that they're not well-funded, and, and ideally, you would want to have a well-funded ethics department in order to ensure that just the behind-the-scenes of what's happening in local government is, there's accountability. And then also, there's kind of the, the arm of what's happening in, you know, our local elections and all of that work as well. And so, so my answer to that would be ensuring that they actually have the tools and the resource, resources to do their job. And ultimately, that tends to be a common theme amongst many departments within the city of Oakland, including our own city auditor's department as well.
Thank you. And then Charlene?
I've had the pleasure of interacting with the Public Ethics Office just through running the course of this campaign. We had a recent major resignation, actually, at the Office of, the Office of Public Ethics. We can see how they're actually understaffed and underfunded, and we have serious issues with corruption. There was a recent report published in the Oakland side about, you know, the way that in a settlement decision that our city council wound up totally overpaying this, this waste contractor. This is unacceptable. One of the jobs that I actually have currently at the EPA and what I used to do at the Government Accountability Office, and when I stood up this Reconnecting Communities program, is to actually look at our, our programs. I've been working with our Inspector General at the federal level. These are, it's just, it is incredibly important as, as folks that are city leadership, that we are stewards of public money and that we take seriously that, you know, there's, I would say that there are direct conflicts of interest, for example, where we see city leadership making decisions in order, because of the conflict of interest of getting elected into office, that are not right. In the end, what city leadership should be charged with is ensuring that our taxpayer money is used wisely and, and spent well in ethical ways. So I would be in favor of increasing the powers of the Public Ethics Office.
Thank you. And Sean?
Yeah, so, you know, I think the Ethics Commission, like so many agencies across civil service, is chronically understaffed. I will also say, you know, all eight of us on this stage have been navigating ethics rules, filing our Form 501s, doing all of this work. And I think often about a John Oliver quote, which is, if you, if you want to do something evil, you hide it in something really boring. And there's nothing more boring and inaccessible than these campaign finance rules. They're incredibly difficult to understand. The IRS, the FPPC, and the Public Ethics Commission all have different roles at the table here. How they talk to each other, where one's role starts and stops is very unclear to folks. I'm priding myself on running my campaign with a deep sense of integrity. I'm not taking any corporate money, I'm not taking any super PAC money, and I come with a deep sense of expertise from five years in the civil service at the State Housing Department. I currently work in local government for the city of San Jose, and I have a Master of Public Policy as well as a Master of Science and Information. And as part of that latter degree, I'm really focused on making sure that government is accessible and easy to use. We need to make sure that we have software and tools that allow us to check boxes off. The FPPC, for example, has a support line. They include a lot of really, you know, caveating language to say what we share is not deliberative, we can still sue you no matter what. And they are open for two and a half hours per day, five days a week. They have a twelve-and-a-half-hour work week. Now, I'm also running on a four-day work week platform and really pride myself on giving Oaklanders dignity through work-life balance, but a twelve-and-a-half work week for this insanely complicated process is not reasonable. I have the government expertise to do this well.
Thank you. Okay. This next question is, I'm gonna, because, is I'm gonna do to Kenitha and Fabian, so the two of you. How do you plan to communicate and what do you think, what, excuse me, let me, how do you plan to communicate what you think and do out to your constituents? And how do you reach out to us? Kenitha?
As a restaurant owner for fourteen-year, my, my best asset is pretty much communicating, bringing team together to collaborate, all different age, different background. That's how we survive a fourteen-year, which is listening and providing service, and those are, and with a retail store background, the same thing. Every day, we have to really pay attention to what our customer want and reach out. We have so, nowadays, we have social media, we have all kinds of stuff, accessible, making sure people know where your office is, location. We have an open-door policy, and I'm planning to do the same, which is to all the resident and anyone that can reach me through anything, just like how my staff. I grew from eight people to forty people before Spice Monkey was closed down during COVID at 2021. There's a lot of different tier, but we work together, and communication is very the key. And communication is very simple. It's just by communicating, just start talking and have conversation and working together and come, you know, agree to disagree, come bring out difference and all of that. So that's actually my favorite part to do. You know, I survive in the, the restaurant business and the retail, not because I'm the best chef in the world with the Michelin stars or anything like that. I did receive a Best Female Chef of the Year 2020, celebrating women's suffrage. It was a very short-lived because it was February, and then COVID in March, everything shut down, and we're still dealing, we're all navigating all this charred water. So I'm excited to reach out and really truly listening to all my, to all Oakland.
Thank you. And Fabian?
How are you doing? When you look at this city council right here, it's like, where's Waldo? I don't never see you at the stores. I don't never see you at West MacArthur at all the restaurants. I don't never see you nowhere. You know what you gotta do for to be effective? You gotta be in the community. You gotta knock on doors. Wouldn't you feel good if your city councilman just knocked on your door and said, hey, how you doing? You know, they might not have to say too much. You gotta knock on doors, you gotta be personal. I'm a pastor, I love to talk to people. So, so it wouldn't be a problem with me, but we need to fire these people who you never see. You can see your neighbor at the grocery store, but you can't see your city councilman at the grocery store? You can see your neighbor at the restaurant, a Oakland restaurant, but you ain't never saw your city councilman at Oakland restaurant? If I don't see you nowhere, I need to fire you.
Thank you. Okay. So this next question is going to go to Mindy, Christina, and Rowena. What would you do to address the city's budget crises, crisis? Are you willing to negotiate with the unions on city worker salaries? Mindy?
Okay. Yeah, you have to work across the board and across the aisle, and then one thing that I would definitely also do, I know, is that you need a federal government that you can work with to solve Oakland's problems. And you're not going to solve them without that, and that's why, you know, Donald Trump as President of the United States would give us the leeway and the option to actually work together to solve the problems. The budget crisis in Oakland has been a long-term problem, and as Nancy often says, there's never been a fiscal audit of, of the, the budget in Oakland. And if you look at what we've, the process of how this deficit came about, it wasn't overnight. This has been going on for many, many years of corrupted leadership in the city, city council. So the first thing that you have to do is take that budget and say, okay, we're gonna put it all on the table. I mean, the craziest thing was ever this Coliseum deal, to think you're gonna hook, solving the budget deficit temporarily by hooking it to a sale, what are we gonna do? Sell the, you know, the Golden Gate Bridge next or something? No, we have to take out all the fluff, all the extra spending, all the, the departments, let me put it that way, that it should not be going to, and then relook how we're gonna work with the unions, how we're gonna work with the city to rebuild, if you don't have real physical production in your city, if you don't have industrialization, if we're not working with Sacramento and other cities and building up our port, then we will not solve the deficit problem of Oakland, and that's what I'm committed to doing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Christina?
Miss Helen, I don't know how it worked where I wanted to use my wild card for the previous question too. I just didn't raise my hand up. You said we could say, say it after?
It's too late, yeah, this time.
Okay. So for the budgeting, we definitely need to have an outside budgeter, an auditor, sorry, to really look down and break down the city's budget in an unbiased way. Currently, right now, the auditor doesn't really have much power. They can tell city council what the people want, what we, what we want to bring up and what needs to be brought to the community, but right now, city council doesn't have to listen to the auditor. So we need to either give them a little bit more power and have a policy where council members can, would have to implement what the people want. Right now, it's up to them. They're the ones going in a room, making separate decisions, and it needs to be transparent, and we need to have a government that listens to what the people want, but really breaking down and looking to see some of the consultants that have been spending millions of, thousands of dollars in, really looking at it to see if it's even something we need. But definitely breaking down the budget and seeing where we can make some budget cuts and allocate it to the right communities.
Thank you. And Rowena?
Definitely a really good question. We know that the city's current fiscal kind of budget standpoint right now is one that has been longstanding. During the pandemic, the city of Oakland received millions to address the homelessness crisis and to help really support, you know, departments here in the city of Oakland. And so one of the day-one priorities for myself would be actually calling for a true audit and a true pulling back the curtain into the budget to see, you know, how we've been really spending the money, be able to identify any wasteful spending, and if there's any areas that we could potentially utilize tech, technology. Similarly, I'm also interested, as someone who currently works at the state level, I have the opportunity to see a lot of the funding sources that are made available to local cities, and so that is something that we really would need to prioritize in an effort to kind of work on the foundations of some of the things that we need in our city around city services. And, and, and then ultimately, we know that our current council is going, going to have to make some tough decisions, and so I would approach that in a way of ensuring that there's equity in that process and prioritizing essential services.
Thank you. And I saw Nancy wants to use a wild card and then Sean, and then, okay, so three people. So Nancy first.
Yeah, to clarify, Oakland's never had a financial budget because the charter says they can only do performance audits. So they've never audited the city financially. It needs to be done by an outside agency, not an inside agency. And this has been going on for years in Oakland. And when our mayor, that was once governor, came to Oakland, that's when Oakland really started going downhill, and we have never been able to recoup from that. We've had millions of dollars coming into Oakland. And where is it? We have a lot of nonprofits doing a lot of work in Oakland. Where's the money and who's giving it to them, and what have they done? Oakland's not changing. We need to get people in office that are going to ask the hard questions and demand answers. The audit needs to come from outside, not within the city of Oakland. Yes, we need to change the charter on, on a lot of items, but definitely Oakland needs an audit done from outside so that we can find out where our money's going, because all our property taxes are going up, they're adding more taxes onto the ballot this year, which we, which, if you look at the writing, that money can be used for other things, even though it's not supposed to be. And that's how they're getting around, how they're handling the money in Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Sean, and then Kenitha. Pull the mic and speak directly into it.
Quick clarifying question. So does each candidate get one wild card or two? One? You know what, I'm gonna hold off then.
Okay, okay. Kenitha?
This is a very frustrating for me. As a someone who run the business, I don't know how Oakland is surviving. When I read about, you know, one-point-nine billion-dollar just unpaid debt and one-hundred-and-fifty million in interest rate alone, so it's definitely need to be renegotiated. It, it just, it's just mind-blowing and shocking. So definitely need an audit for sure, so we can take a look at where we need to spend our money correctly and how it could be more effective and efficient. Restructure everything. I mean, I'm uniquely qualified for this job because of that, because of seventeen-year having a business in a very wild town here. I mean, we survived recessions twice, you know, all the protests, all the, the billing that's being built all at once in downtown, which put all the business in, in, out of business because politicians making decision not without considering or talking to anyone. This is just something that I'm very passionate about trying to figure it out because as a taxpayer and job creator, this is, our city is heading the wrong direction altogether. So I'm very excited to go help in renegotiating everything and get us back on track, because I love this city and I want to help it continue to thrive.
Thank you. Okay. The next question is going to go to Charlene and Sean and then Nancy. What weight should council members give to the advice of the Finance Department and the Budget Advisory Committee in formulating their budget?
So one very important thing that the Budget Advisory Committee has pointed out is that our departments don't currently do performance metrics on basic services. That is a problem. That is something that is commonplace in many cities. It's commonplace in the federal government. This is, I've worked on program evaluation in my roles, and, and it's a problem because when we're looking at some of our most fundamental and basic services, let's take policing as an example. That is something that we absolutely, we, Fabian has pointed out some of the overs, or the overtime issues. Some of that is in fact tied to the fact that we are deeply understaffed, but also we need to look at how our police officers could be more effective, is alongside coupling it with the correct oversight. Both are needed. When you look at any sort of city, whether it's Boston, Camden, New Jersey, one of the things that is so important, especially with a core service, whether it's policing or fire services, is that we need to make sure that these services are high-quality, that we root out any police brutality, police corruption. That is important. We absolutely need to do reform, and that we ensure that citizens in every single neighborhood are, in every community are feel safe and that they can get an adequate response time. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Yeah, so I think Charlene and I both bring a real depth of civil service experience, and, and one thing I can definitely say, just addressing budget issues more broadly, is there are efficient ways to use the city's resources, and we are not doing it right now. The city owns several surface parking lots in the downtown. Some of those have been redeveloped into mixed-income housing, and you know what happened? We got thirty X as much property taxes from those projects. So we need to be stewarding our resources more efficiently. We need to be able to understand where money is being spent. I want to talk about consultants for a minute too, because civil servants interact with them a lot. In the State Housing Department, we gave out, I oversaw about a half-billion dollars of grants that we gave out. We spent a lot of money on consultants, and in fact, we probably gave out a hundred grants for separate programs to build pre-approved plans to build backyard homes. Each city wanted to think they were different. It was not the most efficient use of money, believe it or not. Burlingame's backyard homes did not look that different than San Mateo's, but the consultants were more than happy to take the money. So I will audit those expenses very efficiently. We need to just think about how we're stewarding our resources. Roads are really expensive, and we talk a lot about the cost of housing. We also need to think about the cost of transportation. It's two-million dollars per lane mile to repave our roads, and so we need to be planning things like mobility lanes so we can safely move around our city so that folks like my mom who use a wheelchair are able to move about the city. We can't build our cities for cars, especially with the climate crisis, and that requires stewarding our resources more efficiently.
Thank you. And Nancy?
Again, the budget, again, auditing, and hiring people that know what they're doing. Part of Oakland's problem is we hire directors of departments, they don't come from Oakland, they don't come from the Bay Area, they come from back east and have not a clue how Oakland functions. And if you've lived in Oakland, you've seen how Oakland has changed over the years and under each individual that's been mayor and the council. There's, it depends on what their agendas are as to how Oakland functions, and that desperately needs to be looked at and changed. But when it comes to directors of departments, we need to seriously start looking as to who we're hiring and what their knowledge is for the department that they're running and what they know about Oakland, because it takes two to three to four years before they really get to know what Oakland's all about. And Oakland is not a normal city out there. It's had its issues. It's been a city that's been poorly run since it was inception, since its inception. Money is always left Oakland, it's never stayed here, and that's part of the problem. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the next question is going to go to Fabian and then to Mindy. Are there strategies like refinancing that would help reduce the impact of the city's pension debt? Fabian and then Mindy?
I work with the Labor's International Union Health and Welfare in a pension program. And refinancing, that may And refinancing, that may work, but what we gotta do, we gotta bring more business to Oakland. And I'm gonna say something that may just drive you crazy, but I said, let's bring a casino to Oakland. He said, oh, that's a bad thing. But back in 2004, it would have brought a billion dollars of revenue each year. Would Oakland have a problem with paying for police? No. Would Oakland have a problem of paying for fixing potholes, overtime? No. We gotta bring money into the community. We done lost the A's, we done lost the Raiders, and we lost the Warriors. You know what the city councilmen did? They all just smiled at y'all. They smiled and said, hey, see you later. And we ain't got no revenue coming in. Only revenue we got coming to Oakland, you know what it is? These good Oakland restaurants that we got. But we just need just a little bit more. Think about right by where the Coliseum area is, by the airport. That's what they wanted to do 30 years ago. Just think if they had a casino right there. And just think, and just think, safety, you would have safety, you would have more cops. It would have brought, they said 4,000, it's 5,000 jobs. 24 hours a day. I said, bring casino.
Thank you. And Mindy?
Yeah, hi. I want to get to a root cause of the problem. Because I think a lot of this is root cause and has two root causes. One, in terms of the pensions, besides making the city more productive again, you have to look at that a lot of the pensions have been put into speculative debt. It's tied to a lot of derivatives, a lot of speculation in Wall Street, and that's got to be severed. You cannot have a person's future life, which is what the pension basically is, tied to that kind of speculative control. Secondly, I want to bring up something that has not been really discussed, which I think is tied to the economic question, which is called morals. We used to have a moral society that we understood what it was to be in the image of God, the Creator, who gave us a creative, powerful mind to make new discoveries, to make new inventions, to uplift the quality. We had architecture. You didn't have East Oakland looking like East Oakland does today. Because it used to be an industrial city. So that's why I think you have to bring these kind of questions into bear. Because economics is not just money. You're talking about human life, human development. And again, this is why I go back to you have to have a federal government that you can work with. This is a huge problem. And again, why I think Donald Trump in the White House is very critical to the hand that could help Oakland solve its problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This next question is going to go to Christina, Rowena, and Charlene. Watching how people have to fend for themselves after disasters, what do you know about current city funding for CERT and CORE? And how might you work to keep or change them? Christina, Rowena, you're first. Christina's first.
So like I said before, I am a community leader here in the city of Oakland. Everything that I do is volunteer. I'm in the trenches. I'm helping clean up the streets. I'm helping pass out food. My sister would make a joke to me while we were going through the pandemic. She kept calling me the Costco, Costco Santa. Because what I did was I would go around in the community, whoever needed it, whatever I could do. I worked alongside with Teamster 70 where they started passing out food. I also would work with some of the markets that were giving out free groceries in the community. Currently, right now, our libraries are holding down in case of emergencies. And they actually decided to do a budget cut there. So we definitely need to find budgeting for emergencies, for even when we had our climate crisis, right, where it was so hot, where the trees were falling and libraries had to step up and be the ones to help. And we definitely need to put money to have emergency shelters and emergency things and plan for it.
Thank you. Rowena?
Yeah, so I had the opportunity to, while I was working locally for the city of Oakland during the pandemic, to really get a behind the scenes look at both, at these programs and even the city's emergency operations center and its plan. And so one of the things I kind of walked away with, I did attempt to also get my CERT certificate as well because I really wanted to learn more about kind of the process and how we can ensure that our community members have, you know, have access to and have an understanding of, in times of crisis, how do we step up for one another? And really a strong need for this to be across the city of Oakland, to have, to have this across the city of Oakland and for it to be well resourced. And so one of the things that I would do as council member to ensure that these programs, one, are well supported, well funded, and even that there's just more awareness into the program, is ensuring that, you know, the city of Oakland actually goes after some of the state funding, grant funding that is available for these key essential services as well. And then I would like to use my, my time to dive into really quickly into a question that was asked around how you would communicate with constituents. And that is something that I had the opportunity to lead on both locally and at the state level, hosting community engagement, listening sessions around key policies that were coming to the council, both at the local level and also with statewide legislation. And we also know that it's important to be dialed into the community and their needs. And so that's also things that I've been able to lead on.
So Charlene?
Hi, yeah. So I'm actually a FEMA, that's a Federal Emergency Management Agency, surge capacity member, helping in terms of disaster relief. There's a few things that we need to do here in the city of Oakland. It's not just disaster relief, preparedness, ensuring that we have, for example, SMS emergency alert systems available in all the languages that our beautiful community speaks. But also, we also need to be proactive. I have studied the FEMA emergency map. The two greatest risks that are presented to our community include wildfire. We know that there's a ballot measure coming up this fall. The other thing, though, is flooding. That's the other thing that really presents an enormous risk to West and East Oakland. And we need to be proactive about these things, including looking at our infrastructure. There's grants that are going out the door, capital infrastructure grants that we can invest in and apply for so that we are prepared for the future of climate change. I also did want to use my time to address the pension question. I would say, so every year, we have something called unfunded actuary liabilities. We're paying 133 million dollars each year in interest alone. And I do want to be cautious when we look at refinancing those pensions. But I would say with the Fed especially lowering those interest rates, there is a potential, I would say, to look at wisely and cautiously refinancing those pensions in a way that could potentially make an enormous difference in terms of our budget issues. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So last question and it's gonna go, oh, I'm sorry, Fabian? Yes, go ahead.
I might be cheating a little bit, but I think this need to be said. In the city of Oakland, how y'all see the people riding around like doing the potholes in the city of Oakland? This need to be said because we the women lead the voters. Why is this still the boys' club? And this is 2024. We need to have women out. Women can work construction. I have worked for labor. I worked for Local 166 Launa. We need to have women out there. Instead of having the big boys' club riding the trucks, we need to have women working for the city of Oakland and fixing potholes and doing things. This is not a man's world. Women, women, women can work too. And that's all I want to say.
Okay. And Sean and then Mindy?
And just to clarify, so this is question number eight, which means that the next one is the last question?
That is correct.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Yeah, so I want to talk about emergency. Can folks hear me? Mics are on, cool. Yeah, so I want to talk about emergency management more broadly. I think, you know, certain core are acronyms and like so many things in government, they're not very accessible to the common person. I work in government and I can candidly say those are acronyms where I still have a lot of room to learn about. But I do want to talk about emergencies as I see them in the city of Oakland. We displace thousands of people inside of this city. The era of highway construction, the economic pressures of the tech industry rising here, housing is a public emergency. Housing is also a human right. Housing is healthcare. Housing is reparative justice. And homelessness is a policy choice that we actively need to be undoing. I am quite surprised that we are on our last question and we still haven't gotten any questions about the homes that we live in and the mobility questions around how we move around our community. We spend way too much money inside of this city on paying our rents inside of the city. That is why on day one, I will have a policy to legalize the separate sale of backyard homes. Another important perspective that I bring as an urban planner is that basically 100% of the housing surrounding Lake Merritt would be illegal to build under today's zoning rules. We need somebody who understands the rules on how to make housing more affordable and more accessible. That's why I'm proud to be offering a zero displacement housing program as well. Housing is a human right. Housing is an absolute emergency. And I encourage us all to think about it in those terms.
Thank you. And Mindy, you want to?
Yeah, I want to address this emergency situation, but not to deal right now with the details of what I would do in Oakland. There's plenty to be said on that. But if you look at the, I want to go back to the federal government again. Look at this disaster in North Carolina and in Georgia, where there was no response from the federal government and FEMA didn't have the money because they gave billions of dollars to illegals. And Kamala Harris says, let's give $750 to the people in North Carolina whose homes are destroyed and their lives are destroyed. So therefore, we need to have at this point, a real solution to these problems. And I want to take a little bit of the time to go back to this question of the, the, the community, to communicate to the community. Because this is where we need to have hands on to the population. This is not, this is a nonpartisan race. This is not about what political party you believe in. But if we need to have the real solutions to address everyone in the community, we need to reach out to them. And that's why we need to go after very heavily. Part of preparedness is to get rid of the drug cartels that are running California and are in our city streets, running our cities. And I've had detailed discussions on this with people who know what they're talking about. And right now, you have tons of cartels, tons of gangs that are running the drugs, that are doing the crime and that are part of the homelessness problem. So that's why I go back to my initial idea that you can only solve the problem by solving the whole package and not separating things into issues. Thank you.
Okay. So we're on to the last question and it's going to go to Sean and Nancy and Kanessa. 74% of Oakland voters passed the Fair Elections Act. It calls for a new system of campaign finance whereby citizens would receive vouchers to donate to candidates of their choice. Are you committed to working to fund a rollout of the Democracy Dollars program in 2026 and thereafter? And would you support a ballot measure tax to provide funding? Sean first.
Yeah, so I'll answer the question very directly. Yes, I would support that ballot measure. Yes, I would work tirelessly to do it. I'm really bummed that we don't have Democracy Dollars inside of this election. You know, I think it's a really powerful way to counteract the power of corporate money inside of the civil service and inside of elections. I'm not taking any corporate money. I'm not taking any super PAC money. I'm a dues paying union member with lived experience around homelessness and also very much a budget nerd. So, you know, I think when it comes to things like Democracy Dollars, we need to think about how to bring more money into the city of Oakland. I've heard manufacturing named a few times here. And one elephant in the room that I don't think we're acknowledging is that manufacturing also comes with a lot of carbon emissions. And Oakland is already disproportionately exposed to asthma and issues like that. We need to steward our resources more efficiently by building a human scale version of Oakland. And economic and environmental justice are inextricably tied together. When we build our cities for people, when we allow smaller commercial spaces, when we allow mobility lanes so that folks on wheelchairs and on bikes and walking can safely move around, when we invest in tree canopy in parts of Oakland, like deep east Oakland, not just inside of Rockwood, we make our entire economy better and we bring in way more property taxes, way more sales taxes. We need to be stewarding our resources more efficiently and we need to think about how we've been developing our cities. Our city is in too many ways for cars and not for people. And that is not economically sustainable. It is not sustainable to address the climate crisis. Yes, on Democracy Dollars, but the issue is much bigger than that.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yes, I'm for Democracy Dollars. In the past, we've always given money out to candidates based on how much money they've raised. And I'm one of those individuals that does not ask for money. I don't think money should be in politics at all, but unfortunately, that's not the way this country runs. And we, and that needs to change. If you offer me a dollar, I'll gladly take it because I know who you are. But not because you want to control me. And that's part of Oakland's problem is a lot of the money that is given to people that run for office is they owe back on that dollar. And that is something that has been running Oakland for years. And the other thing I want to bring up that regarding the police department, there's less than 500 officers in the police department. And they aren't saying that because they'd have to pay us back property taxes. Because some of our property taxes are based on how many officers we have. And I was told by an officer that there's only 306 officers a day on beats. Two officers doing investigations on housing, three officers doing investigations for harder crimes. We got serious problems in this city. We need to look at the commissions that are overseeing the different departments and who are sitting on those boards. And a lot of those commissions need to be revamped to work with the departments and with the citizens of Oakland. Thank you.
Kanessa?
Yes, I would support it. As someone who never aspired to run for office before, it is pretty mind blowing in how we elected our official and how they're still here after so many years. And, you know, as a business owner who just show up every day and making sure that my staff is employed and myself and serving my community, it's just been mind blowing in term of this journey, what I have learned so far and how, you know, all the, the money that need to be in order to run an election. And again, for someone who always work for every dollar I have and create jobs, I also have a hard time asking for donation. And I'm very proud to say I lent a lot of my own private money to the campaign and because I'm very frustrated, frustrated that we continue getting robbed. All my friends are closing all their, their business. Howden been robbed four time this year's alone. We got car driving inside twice. Our insurance is through the roof. Our operation cost is through the roof. Everything is through the roof. And it's just, it's just crazy. And I'm just like, and what's really draw the line for me is when my dad died, we can't make police report there too. You can't make police report when someone rob you. You can't make police report when someone died, you get mugged, your cars. It took 11 month for the DA to release the police report on the car crash. It took three insurance companies still suing each other and that case is still not settled. So anybody's a lawyer, please help me out. I am very frustrated at how everything is functioning. So I hope you elect people and do all their background and making sure that they truly represent your voice and your best interests.
And Christina, you want to use your wild card on this one?
Yep. Yes, Ms. Helen. So currently, right now, I've actually got the most donations, but smallest increments. So for me, it's just asking people little by little. My favorite number is 24. If you can do at least $24 to help me out. It was something that at least inspired me to feel like people were coming alongside with me. They believed in me. And I don't have the funding to be able to, you know, put a large amount in my campaign. I don't have name recognition. I don't have labor ties. I have community ties. Like I said, I do everything for Oakland on my spare time. And for me, you know, we've been excluded on some of the forums. So being able to be included in all of them because of me being a qualified candidate is important. It's not about the money that I have. I'm, you know, keeping myself afloat, keeping myself in the race. But it is something that is looked at and money talks. So that is something that's currently happening. So we should include everyone that is qualified. It should be something that we have a fighting chance for to fight for people. And I just wanted to give you guys my, my little two cents about it.
Thank you. We're now going to move to candidate closing statements and we're going to do the reverse order from the beginning. So Charlene, you're up first.
Yeah, we have really complex issues in Oakland and there are no easy solutions. What I offer to you all is the fact that I'm a candidate who does my homework. I really analyze things from a structural point of view to understand just the complexities and ways that, you know, we, we have limited resources and we have a lot of issues. Just to give an example around the homelessness issue, that's a great example of how we fundamentally have a system that is broken that actually has people put on waiting lists that says that you can only get access to housing resources once you reach a certain vulnerability score. And then, only then does the city intervene and give you access to housing. These are the things, just as an example, that I'm willing to do as someone who's been a longtime policymaker and as someone who is willing to get into the, to the details. Because the devil is ultimately in the details. We can have all the advocacy in the world, but really with the finite resources that we have, we have to get smarter about the way that we implement our government.
Thank you. Rowena?
Thank you so much for hosting this forum. You know, I'm someone that has been rooted here in the city of Oakland, proud alumni of Laney College, Mills College in East Oakland and Law School just across the bay. And I've had the opportunity to work on behalf of Oaklanders for, for a decade now. And so the experience that I bring to this work, you know, someone mentioned the, the winter storms of 2020, December 2022. And Alameda County, in fact, was one that was left out of the governor's declaration. And that was some work that I was able to do to get And that was some work that I was able to do to get Alameda County on that declaration. And so I believe that as the only candidate endorsed by the local Democratic Party and a huge coalition of support, I would love to have your support. And please visit my website, Rowena for Oakland, to learn more about me.
Thank you. Christina?
So I just want to thank each and every one of you guys for being here. I know it's Saturday morning. You guys could be spending your time somewhere else. So it shows a vested interest in the city of Oakland. So I just want to start off by saying thank you, guys, or end it by saying thank you to you guys. My name is Christina Tostado, like Tostadas, like Ms. Helen said earlier, but Tostado. And I do go by Tina from the town. I could have said Christina for Oakland, like everyone else. But when you're from it, you know you're for it. And for me, you know, growing up in East Oakland, it's, you know, we had issues back in the days. I remember getting our Christmas lights stolen and having to move needles off the floor. But now, as a grown woman, I see that we have a homelessness issue, that we don't have even paved streets or even clean water. For us to not even have the bare necessities is why I'm fighting for mental health, why I'm fighting for economic development here in Oakland and making sure that Measure U works for us, the people.
Thank you. Mindy?
I want to start with, again, thanking you all for being here. But I want to add in that the reason I would say to vote for me for number one would be because, you know, one question that didn't come up today is the education of our children. And to me, that's a very precious question, because they are our future. And if we don't take our children and the development of them as a top priority, we're going to lose that future. And as I said earlier, God did create us in His image. He gave us a beautiful mind. I'm old enough to remember the time of JFK and the space program and how that brought such joy to kids in the 60s that we thought there was everything we could do. There was exploration. And that is what we need again here in Oakland. We need a vision. And we need to take care of the fact that 74% of our children, of Black and Latino children, cannot read a grade level. I mean, that is unacceptable, and that's why I'm running. That's why at 72 years of age, I, you know, am making it a priority however more time God gives me on this earth to make sure we solve the problems of Oakland and the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Fabian?
My name is Fabian Robinson, and I am fighting for the city of Oakland. They have a woman back there, Mandisa Leachman, lost her son, Devon Brown, and every day she hurt because she had not got justice. And she's not the only one that is a mourning parent. And I see Oakland, all these politicians, all they do is laugh and talk and take money from big packs. That's why you don't know the politicians. If you gave them money, they'd know your first and your last name. But guess what? It's time for the stand-up and make a change. Vote for somebody who care about the less people, the LGBT community, the homeless. They got a politician that's not here today that said that he don't want a homeless shelter in Jack London. Well, where do we want it at? He shouldn't even get your vote. And as a matter of fact, let me call his name, Laron Armstrong. He shouldn't even get your vote.
Excuse me, that we don't...
Okay, well, I'm just saying it. I said it already. What I'm saying is that we need to change Oakland, and we don't need politicians. We need some fighters. I'm the only one that brought out different things that nobody else ain't never brought out.
Thank you very much. Kanitha?
Well, thank you for having me here and thank you for being here. I am, I'm very grateful and I'm very blessed. My parents loves America, and they love the democracy. And my dad always said I wanted to be a proud American, and before he died, he did got his green card. He moved here from Canada. So I'm sad to see he didn't get the vote for the very first time, because he's really into public service. And he always want me to do politic, which I really don't like, because it shattered our family. If you would elect me, Kanita Matory, for Oakland, there's so much background about me you can read and look at. You would have someone very broad and have a lot of different experience, culture all across the board. And Oakland does have a lot of problem. I'm very creative. I'm very talented. And this is where I'm ready to bring over and serve. And I want to make Oakland a place that where people want to visit, to live, to work, and invest for my two beautiful teenager daughter.
Nancy?
Yes, I want to thank the League for this forum and for all of you taking your Saturday time to come and sit here and listen to us. Oakland, like I said before, has got serious problems. It's not going to change overnight. It's going to take a lot of work to make it change, because we've got individuals that we've got to deal with. It's not an issue that we can just put it on a piece of paper and tomorrow it changes. We've got work, and we need to bring the community together. We've got a lot of new people in Oakland, and we need to bring them out and educate them about what Oakland's all about. Again, my name is Nancy Sidebotham, and please vote for me for number two. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sean?
Thanks so much for being here, everyone. I love Oakland so much. And my call to you all is just to pay attention to the built environment and the way we've really planned our city. I'm the candidate with the deepest housing expertise, and I love Oakland so much. We're known for a lot of great things. We are not known for our affordability in the Bay Area, and we need someone with deep expertise on how to make housing more affordable and accessible. I have a deeply serious zero displacement housing program that allows us to re-welcome refugees, to make room for more folks, while also making sure that residents can stay in place. I want to talk about public safety too, because honestly, I expected a question. It's something people are pretty hyper-fixated on in the city. And sometimes in those discussions, we only think about police officers with guns. But housing is public safety. Safe streets are public safety. Traffic violence is public safety. Affordable healthcare is public safety, and I encourage us all to think about those things in those terms. We need to be thinking as urban planners about how we plan our cities. Now, the number one issue across America is the economy, and we need to be serious about how to make Oakland more affordable and accessible. Housing and transportation are some of the biggest costs. We need to rein them in and take it more seriously. Vote Sean Donino.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Oakland and our community partners, I want to thank the candidates for their participation today, and we also want to thank you, audience, for coming to meet the candidates and posing thoughtful questions. The forum will be rebroadcast on KTOP, Oakland's Government Access Cable Program. The recording will be posted on the League of Women Voters of Oakland's website, lwvaukland.org/decide, and our YouTube channel. The League's website is your one-stop shop to help you vote. You'll find dates of other forums, candidate profiles, summaries of ballot measures, pros and cons, and vote 411 with personalized information about where, what will be on your specific ballot and the location of your polling place. If you'd like to get involved with helping make democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join the League, and we invite you to do so. A few reminders about important dates. Election Day is November 5. If you've moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation, you need to reregister. And the deadline to do that is October 21, 2024. In Alameda County, every voter will be mailed a ballot, and then you can vote early at one of the 24 vote centers around Oakland, or vote by mail, or drop it in one of the ballot drop boxes around the city. In Oakland, candidates are selected through ranked choice voting, which allows you to rank up to five candidates for each office. Once a candidate receives more than 50% of the counted votes, the candidate is declared the winner. Ranked choice voting eliminates the cost and time needed for runoff elections. This concludes our forum. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you.